Mike's talk, he can jump up there and fix it.
Good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order our school board meeting for June 2nd, 2021 meeting. Leslie Miller is not here today, so I will be running the show. Please bear with me and be patient. My first time up here, and we'll get through this okay. Ryan, roll call please.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Present.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
So, at this time, we do not have a pledge, so I would like to invite my retirees up to lead us in the pledge tonight. You too, Mr. Mesher.
It's gonna be a tradition right here.
Not as fast as Mesher.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce everybody up here at the table tonight. All the way to my left, I have Tom Wolf, a board member. I have Don Henry, also a board member. Dr. Andrea Townsend, our superintendent. My name is Joe Cox. John Llewellyn to my right, also a board member. And then, all the way down to my far right, is Ryan Sloan, our treasurer. And then, we have our administration staff out in the audience. We have Melissa Theis, Assistant Superintendent. Devin Berry, Director of Human Resources. Jack Hagg, Business Manager. And of course, Ryan's at the end of the table here with us. It is recommended that the agenda for the June 2nd, 2021 meeting be adopted as presented. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
No changes, no comments? Okay. It is recommended that the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 9th, 2021. Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Sorry. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, it is recommended that the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 19th, 2021, and the special meeting held on May 25th, 2021 be approved as submitted. Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
There are no comments from the public relating to the agenda items today. So, number eight would be the Student Representative Report, and Mr. Llewellyn will be talking about that tonight.
I'm gonna pinch-hit for a minute. As everybody knows, who attends these or watches occasionally, Ashton Davy is leftist. He's graduated. He's grown up now. So, we won't have him with us. But Sarah, who we also chose to represent the student body as a rep to the board, couldn't be with us tonight. She did communicate to me that she had some plans that conflicted with the meeting, so she won't be here. So, I wanted to make at least just a couple of quick comments about how we're doing with the 21-22 school year. We have two candidates that submitted applications to us for consideration. They're both going to be interviewed on the 16th, which will be prior to our meeting, two weeks from today. And likely, you know, we may choose both of them to serve along with Sarah. We'll see how that goes when the interviews take place. But that'll be part of what we're doing. And then, at the end of the month, on the 26th, there's also going to be, and it may get pushed to July, but for now, it's tentatively June 26th. We'll be having a student roundtable with the four other districts that we've been communicating with, pretty much since early spring, really, I guess, late February into March, to talk about a couple of issues with legislators. I'll hopefully have a lot more, or I'll have Sarah share a lot more about that on the 16th. But just a couple of just updates, and thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up is Janine Corbett with our communications update.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see people without masks. I hope we all recognize each other. I see Mr. Llewellyn has grown a mustache. Gotchi since we've last. Yeah, yeah. I had to shave mine off before taking my mask off, but that's a whole other story. Okay. Anyway, okay. We have several ways you can see what's happening in your school district. The official Facebook page is West Carrollton City Schools. If you prefer Twitter, that's at WC City Schools. You can access either of those feeds at westcarrolltonschools.com. And I wanted to note, too, that even though we're no longer in school, our stories continue. They just will change somewhat during the summer. You'll see some behind-the-scenes things. And also, we still have a lot of stories that we didn't get to cover normally, so you'll still see some of our kids' pictures out there as well on Facebook. Is your child ready for kindergarten? Enrollment for next school year is open, and the child must be five by August 1st and reside within the West Carrollton School District. Enrollment should be completed online at westcarrolltonschools.com. Just click on enrollment. Follow the instructions under 21-22 kindergarten enrollment. I was just at the awards for the track and field for the boys. The girls is starting in a minute. And, boy, did our teams do good. They really did great this year. The boys were first in their division. You can see that trophy at the bottom right. And they brought home the Miami Valley League Division Champion Trophy. The girls were second by half a point. And I was speaking with Coach Kirk about that, and what was remarkable about the girls' team was they had fewer athletes on the team, performing in fewer events than the boys did. So, just to get second was, they did really well. They did really well. Not to take away from the boys' accomplishments, because the team is really outstanding, and it was so much fun listening to all the awards. Demetia Thomas, Sienna Payton, Shaya Sales, and Rachel Woodruff qualified for the 4x400 regional competition for the ladies. And Arete Kadiri qualified for the regional hurdles competition. And that is, in fact, a picture of him in the hurdles. So, congratulations to all of them. And we want to congratulate, again, the class of 2021. This has been another interesting year. But these kids, they just went with the flow, and they did what they needed to do to graduate. And it was an awesome ceremony. The ladies here, Jody Morris, PJ Bab, that put that together, along with the honors assembly, they did a great job. So, we want to remind all of our graduates, you've all, you're always going to be a pirate. I also want to congratulate our retirees that are here this evening, and the ones that are not here, because all of those kids up there, plus more, you've all been part of their success in getting them to that point. Doesn't matter what your job is here in the district. It's all about the kids. Somehow, you're doing something for the kids. And we want to remind all of our pirates, get out and play this summer. And the first day of school is August 18th. And that is all I had to this evening.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? First of all...
Do I have a choice? Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
First of all, the first day of August 18th will not be the first day of school for three people in the room. I think we should mention that. The other thing, and I don't think you need to have anything validated, okay? But I just, every time we talk about the cutoff date for kindergarten, I just, I just feel like saying that that is, was one of the most significant decisions that were made for a long, long time. And I keep forgetting to mention my own personal situation, because I have two January birthdays, two April birthdays. Well, there are no, that's not a problem. The reality is that the youngest of those four is 17. I also have a five-year-old granddaughter and a four-year-old, I think, grandson. And what, what's significant is that the granddaughter was born late, I'm sorry, early in October. I forget the date. I mean, she's just my granddaughter. Why should I know that? But anyway, in October, they never, ever considered starting her early. They just left it like it was, and she's doing fine. My grandson was born September the 26th. He would have, this, this, this year, this past year, started. But practically, practically from day one, I said, "No, don't do that." "Don't, do not do that." And they didn't. His, his, both his parents are teachers, and I think they know. So, I have firsthand experience of the importance of, of... And of course, this is Colorado, and Colorado is the old October the first thingy. So, they, they both, well, the second, the son, grandson, could have started this year. "No, no, 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 no." So, you know, hopefully, parents make that decision. But in West Carrollton School District, they don't have to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Now, we have a recognition of our retiring employees from the district.
Looking for your whistle.
Go ahead, okay. First off, we have Doug Mesher. He is currently the principal at the middle school. We also have Bonnie Ott here this evening, and she is a teacher at the middle school. Schnell, sorry. You were at the middle school, though, at one point. I was reading that earlier, and that's what, I don't know, that's stuck in my mind, sorry. And Terry Wolf, also at Schnell. And so, if you want to come on up, we also have some other retirees here. Well, I'm sorry. I take that back. We have other retirees that are not here.
So, we actually have some board members that are gonna come up, so we'll start with Mr. Mesher and Mr. Henry.
Would you like me to use that mic or this one?
It's up to you.
I'll use my mic.
Come on up, Doug.
I did not write this biography. If I had, it might read a little differently, 'cause Doug and I have known each other for a long time. Doug's pirate adventure began in 1989, when he was hired as an OWA teacher. Show of hands, who knows what OWA is, since we don't use that terminology much anymore? He was promoted to Middle School Assistant Principal in 1999, and principal in February of 2009. Who left to make that vacancy? You can use the mic so that they can hear at home.
That would be John Runzo.
Thank you. His leadership tenure as principal saw seven different assistant principals over the past 12 and a half years. After attending Versailles High School and graduating from Wittenberg University, also playing college football, Doug began his career teaching health and physical education at Hellel Academy, which is a school committed to student success with a caring Jewish community connected to the world, located in Dayton, North Dayton. Doug was there for two years, which had a graduating class of only three in 1985, and 12 students in 1986 graduated. He went on to teach high school science at both Carlisle and Waynesville, for one year each between 1987 and 1989. Throughout his career and progression from teacher to assistant principal, Doug was a steadfast part of the coaching staff for football, basketball, the occasional softball team. He even refused head coaching positions just so he could coach more than one sport each year. Enjoy retirement, Mr. Mesher. You deserve it.
All right, Bonnie, I'm gonna read a couple paragraphs here about you. Bonnie retired as a third-grade teacher from Harold Schnell Elementary after more than 30 years of teaching. 21 of those years have been at West Carrollton, also teaching at the middle school. And as she said a minute ago, I heard out here, I think, C. F. Holiday. Bonnie has taught Title I, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Middle School Language Arts during her career. Prior to jumping on our ship, she taught at Bishop Leibold, Monroeville Elementary, and South Dayton Schools. Bonnie graduated from Bowling Green State University, 1978. They could, they didn't have to put that, well, never mind. I've already read it now, I'm sorry. Receiving her master's in 2005 from the University of Dayton. She has served on numerous committees, even parrot parties and bubblegum days. That's a Schnell thing, right, the bubblegum? Well, maybe all elementarys, but... Bonnie, we wish you the very, very best as you skate your way into retirement. What's that about, skate? Had a feeling, that's in quotation marks, that that meant something, so congratulations, Bonnie.
Miss Ott is also an Ohio State fan. Why, you say? Because of her sun marching in the band.
Bonnie, I'll see you at Kettering Ice Rink. And Tegory.
Could you come over here on this side? 'Cause I wanna put you to work here later. I did not get a chance to say anything at Mr. Mesher's retirement party. But in honor of Roger Gibson, I need to say something. I think, I'm not sure Mr. Henry answered the question of what OWA was. But OWA was at the junior high, and OWE was at the high school. Occupational Work Adjustment is what it was, and at the high school, it was Occupational Work Experience. But at the junior high, now, these, this is back when we did whatever we needed to do to get kids through. Now, they still do that today, except at that point in time, the state wasn't interfering too much. But what's significant about that whole thing was, probably in the late 90s, the state came along and said, "Well, you can't have a thing like general math in ninth grade, and you can't have a thing like OWA in ninth grade. That's not rigid enough, so get rid of that stuff." So, it's very unfortunate, but it was kind of a good example of how the state comes along and interferes in our business, and we can't really control that much. The one, the reason I mentioned Roger Gibson is that they had, the staff had a definition for OWA. I told you it was Occupational Work Adjustment. The staff would say, "Where are Mesher's kids?" And the answer was, "Out walking around." That's basically what most of, because they had work stations. Their two electives were work stations. So, they were out walking around. That was good definition. Sorry to do that, but I couldn't do it at your retirement. I was bound and determined to do it. Now, who are you? I'm gonna say something right off the bat that's kind of a zinger. Mrs. Wolf was hired to teach in West Carrollton Schools in 1985. And for the first couple of years, had some short-term, or long-term, I'm sorry, long-term teaching, substitute teaching assignments. In 1988, she actually got her first real classroom. So, from that moment on, it was quality education all the time. I have a couple of stories. And be sure to tell your mother. Terry's mother was a building principal secretary at the junior high for a long, long time. Lynn Vogt. She's just a, was a marvelous lady. Had a little difficulty with some of the problem-makers and troublemakers, and that was just with the staff. But anyways, she was wonderful. But she kinda probably kept Terry informed of things I did, and one of the things I did was do morning announcements. And I occasionally, on morning announcements, had, I played songs every once in a while. And she made Terry aware of that, I think. So, one particular year, Terry called, or maybe her mother said something to me about whether I had a particular song. And I thought, "Well, I don't remember playing it, but I will check, check to see." Sure enough, I did. So, she asked if I could get that card or that song to, to her, and I did. Now, just to give you an idea how old this story is, these were cassette tapes that, that we were using back then. And I had a mini boombox. So, anyways, I got this to her. Now, here's the, here's the background of the story. She had, that year, and probably her, all of her other grade-level teachers in that same grade, a rather challenging year, shall we say? That's a nice way of saying they were all handfuls and what have you. And I'll tell you a good example of how, and it's a pervasive thing, you know, it, 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 it's probably the whole grade level was, was affected by this reality. And I'll tell you how pervasive it was. Most of the time, the cafeteria staff hated to see that class come to lunch. It was just that kind of a situation. You got the picture? So, Terry had an idea. So, I got the song to her, I got the cassette tape, I got the mini boombox. And on the last day of school, when the last student walked out the door, Terry went down to the office and played over the intercom the Hallelujah Chorus, which we know as "Hallelujah", because everybody was so, well, they celebrated the fact that that class was gone. Now, I need to say, that's, those are rare. Those are rare. Most teachers last Thursday, when the class left, and we're talking elementary here for the most part, most teachers probably say, "I wish I could have that class again next year," because most of them like the classes they have, not, but it's not, not always the case. So, that was, that was Terry. That's the way Terry was. I got another one. Oh, excellence in teaching. Now, if you don't want to listen to me, just go down the hall to the lobby of the auditorium, and go in there, and up on the walls, or at least will be up on the walls, are pictures of these teachers down through the years who were selected for excellence in education in West Carrollton Schools. Terry was inducted into that outstanding group in 2004. So, that's, if you don't want to listen to me, just think about that bunch, okay? Now, moving on, I have pictures. And I want to share these with you, or share this. Ronnie Wilson was a graduate of West Carrollton. He came back and taught some, and then he became principal at Shade, I think, maybe in, I'm not sure what year. But then, he moved on and opened Schnell, and then went on to finish his career in West Carrollton at Nicholas. But he had sort of an attachment to Shade, and when he wrote this history of West Carrollton School, there were quite a few pictures of, of, and quite a bit of attention given to Shade School. So, let me read what he, very briefly, what he said. Shade School faculty members were close to one another and to their students. They gathered for celebrations and funerals and weren't afraid to look silly, his word, not mine, silly in the name of learning. So, I have three pictures. Would you show those to this bunch over here? And Mrs. Moore, now, we talked about this. Hopefully, you can get us a close-up. You didn't have to go all the way over there. Hopefully, this will work. But the picture to the right is, just to show you how Shade was, at a baby shower for Michelle Campbell. And by the way, she was Michelle Wicker Campbell. She was a graduate of West Carrollton. But Michelle Campbell were the following teachers. Anne Moran, Anne Moran. Now, these are all gonna be names that are pretty familiar to a lot of people. Anne Moran, Michelle Campbell, Monica Butcher Enix, Ann Brewer, and the late Mindy Branderberry, and Terry Wolf. So, she was in a lousy picture, I admit that. But the picture at the bottom was Happy Halloween in 1991, and they dressed up obviously for the day, which a lot of staff does. But in that picture, Ann Brewer, Julie, the student-teacher. That's not you. You weren't there. Rosemary Heisey, Michelle Campbell, and David Mays, who was the principal at that time, and Terry Wolf. And then, the picture up on the left, dressed up to celebrate Right to Read Week, and a lot of buildings did Right to Read Week for a long, long time, were Kenny Moore. Now, there's a blast from the past, right? Kenny Moore as Babar? See, I never read to my kids, so I don't know these, these creatures. Babar. And the other picture, and this might be good enough to see, Terry Wolf as the Cat in the Hat. And there she is with this big hat on. Also, I think you can tell she had some face paintings on there for whiskers and stuff like that. But the point is, these were randomly selected pictures that Ronnie Wilson put in years ago, but Terry's in every one of them. And that's what Terry did. She just was always a part of everything. And the last thing I want to say, oh, wait a minute. It's very, I'm very proud. You do this, or do I? I'm very proud to give you this pride award. Again, this is, this is basically 33 years of excellent teaching, and I guess you get even this, even better, maybe? And the final thing I want to... And the final thing I wanna say is, and there are these people in our lives, and you can keep that piece of paper. Yeah, sure. There are people in our lives that we can think of, and we look back, that always smiled, always had a smile, but we call them infectious smiles. And you were one of, I've never seen you without a smile on your face. So. Well, that's because I never came over with a mask on. So thank you for thirty-three years of distinguished, excellent service in West Carrollton schools and thirty-three years of smiles. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you and congratulations to all of our retirees. Now on to the business part of our meeting. Mr. Barry? If you guys would like to go ahead and leave, you can do so. We'll pause for just a minute.
Congratulations to you all.
Actually, you've served so many years, you need to stay till the end of the meeting. All right, Mr. Barry, go right ahead.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item eleven A, accept the resignation of the listed individuals. Item eleven B, conditionally grant a limited teaching contract to the listed individual for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, pending approval by the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation and Concentra Drug Screening as required by Ohio Revised Code thirty-three nineteen point two nine one and the policies of the West Carrollton City School District. Item eleven C, non-renew the two substitute teachers effective at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Eleven D, amend the leave of absence for two individuals. And item eleven E, grant a leave of absence to the listed individual in accordance with the provisions of the Family Medical Leave Act.
So moved.
Second. Comments?
Uh, we, we hired our second teacher, who is also from West Carrollton. So he's coming home as well, the music department, Jeremy King. So we wanna welcome him.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And number twelve, Mr. Barry?
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item twelve A, grant supplemental pupil activity contracts to the listed individuals for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Item twelve B, non-renew the following athletic, non-athletic supplemental pupil activity contracts at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Slung?
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Barry, number thirteen. One more time.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item thirteen A, grant a leave of absence to the listed individual in accordance with the provisions of the Family Medical Leave Act.
Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Barry, I'm gonna let you go ahead and run right on through these.
Okay. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the revised job description, number two hundred three is the title. And the title is Communications Assistant to Public Relations as Presented.
And I need a. Motion and a second, please.
Second.
And a roll call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Item fifteen, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the revised job description, number two hundred seven, receptionist enrollment specialist emus as presented.
Uh, motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item sixteen, superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented, the revised central office support staff salary and benefit schedule for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
Need a second of motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And you're making my job easy tonight, Mr. Barry, so go right ahead.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the change in title for Angela Cotter from secretary to supervisor to receptionist slash enrollment specialist slash emus and place her on the central office support staff salary schedule at Level A, Step thirteen.
Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
May I ask a question? Who's gonna be the first person you see when they walk in the door? So she's still, that's the first part of her title. Okay, thank you.
Any comments, sir?
Yeah, it, it was inaccurately written in her job description where she used to be under Frank Roach. Um, and the job description was still written that way.
Thanks, sir.
Item eighteen, superintendent recommends that the board approve the change in title for Janine Corbett from secretary to central office administrator to public relations and place her on the central office support staff salary schedule at Level A, Step twenty-two.
Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, sir.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All right, moves us on to our comments and reports. Uh, committee reports. Mr. Wolfe?
Nope.
Mr. Henry?
I was done. Except the, uh, all these people that we okay tonight.
Mr. Henry?
And everybody out here.
Let's take full advantage of this while we got a chance. Talking to Mr. Henry.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hag if he would make a few comments about Tuesday morning's meeting on school construction.
Sure. So yeah, Tuesday, our, our team met, that oversees, our design committee team that oversees the building project. And we went, met with Shook, Garmin, Miller to go over our progress. Anybody's driven by the schools today? You'll notice quite a bit of process, of progress in the front yard. There are no sidewalks left at either Holiday or Shade. There's very few trees left, and it is coming up quickly. Before August, when we come back, there'll be new sidewalks down in parking lots built in the front yards of both of those schools. So it's changing quick. Things are going well. We're right on target. We're looking for second-story steel should be arriving in about, about eight days from today. And they will start placing bar joists and decking up on the second floor to prepare for concrete pours on that. And once the second floor gets poured, then this prior project will really take off.
So the cranes are coming back.
Pardon?
The cranes are coming back.
Yes, they will be. You'll see the cranes out there setting those joists when it comes to that point. So it's moving along well. Very happy with the progress right now.
And several areas were ahead of schedule.
I hate saying that because a day like today, we kinda lost today. There wasn't a lot, so we hope for sunny, sunny weather as we move forward on it. The good news is, the masons are the ones that were really pushing to, but they've been working four tens, four ten-hour days. So a day like this, what they'll do is they'll make up that day on Friday, weather permitting, so we don't really lose that amount of work. And if need be, if we lose a couple, then they might come back Saturday and work Saturday. So the plan will be is to keep them going and keep bringing in as many bodies as we can to lay the brick. So, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn? Nothing?
Nope.
All right. Dr. Townsend?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Jody Morris and PJ Bab for a fantastic graduation. The ceremony was outstanding. Congratulations to our kids of twenty twenty-one. Nice to be back at UD. I'd like to wish our retirees a great retirement. They've served our district well, and I wish them some relaxing time. I'd also like to congratulate our boys and girls track teams and Coach Kirk. And then just one final note, our littles are out, so please drive safely. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Slung?
Uh, the, the state legislature is working on the, the new state budget that would start July first for the next two years. At the end of April, the, the House of Representatives submitted their, their plan for, for school funding. And they did incorporate into that, it's called the Fair School Funding Plan. It's a funding plan that legislators and treasurers and superintendents and other school officials have been working on for the past three years. Just yesterday, the Ohio Senate released their version of the K-12 funding model that would begin July first. And they did not incorporate that school funding plan that the House was hoping to get in place. Uh, the Ohio, a couple senators said that the, the House's school funding plan was, would be too expensive down the road. And the Senate, so the Senate plan, just an interesting factor. And the Senate, the Senate plan is actually more expensive in the short term than the House plan. But as I said, the, the, the Senate just thought that the House plan was gonna be too expensive four to six years down the road. So, so the Senate, so both of them obviously have submitted their plans. And now they'll probably have a, have a conference committee. And so we'll see how the House and the Senate work together the next four weeks to come up with a new budget that would start July first.
Great.
May I ask you a question? How afraid should we be of the Senate proposal? Because it, it's been made very clear by State President, Senate President Matt Huffman, that he wants his plan to be adopted. This fair funding thing, the old Cup Patterson, that's, he doesn't want that. And it's frightening, and you people should be aware of what's going on up there. Because there are those people who keep espousing the voucher system. And it, it, it won't be any better if they change it so that it doesn't go through the schools. Because right now, we figure out who's going to charter schools in our district. And then they give us money, and then we give it back. Which doesn't sound right, but it's the way it's done. But now they're talking about just basically eliminating that step and just putting that, taking that money before it ever gets to us, which is a reduction in, in, in what we would get. It, it's, it's kinda scary. And for a long, long time, and again, you people should know all this, for a long, long time, the voucher system worked in conjunction with a, a thing called Ed Choice, where they identify certain buildings in the state, not districts, but buildings, that by their own manipulation, determine that those buildings are low performing, and I hate to use that word. I've never liked to use that word, but that's what they use, so don't have much choice. Uh, 'cause I never know what low performing means. I, I don't know anybody, I don't know any building in our district that's low performing. We do everything we're supposed to do to help a student. That's not low performing. That's high performing. But the state doesn't want that definition. They, they wanna use that low performing. They want you to think about a building that's, where the test scores aren't very good. So anyways, they'd use that to determine students in that building, those buildings that could request a voucher. I don't think they're happy with things or way things are going 'cause a lot of people aren't asking. Students don't wanna leave their schools. They've been in some of these schools for a long, long time. Why would they wanna just leave? You know, so they're probably not getting the number of voucher requests that they'd like to have. So now they wanna change it, and I forget what bill it is, but they wanna change it vouchers for all. Vouchers for all. Doesn't matter where you are, who you are, what, what building you're in. It doesn't, what, what, it doesn't matter. You, you can request a voucher. Well, that's desperation on their part. If they have to go to that level or that, that depth to, to try to get that build up. But that's what they're after, that's what they want. And one way or another, they're gonna, they're gonna try every time they can, one way or another, to do it, and it's terrifying. I don't think we, a lot of people have the sense that they, there are people up there that determined to change public schools. But let me just tell you, there are lots of people up there that does exactly what they wanna do. No question about it. So how afraid should we be of those, that Senate proposal? The, the bill that involves vouchers for all and all that stuff? I mean, are you afraid?
Uh, I'm, I'm not, I don't know all the details of that specific bill, to be honest with you. I mean, we, we don't have, it's, it's not a, I mean, that, you know, that, that issue, it's not a huge issue for us. I mean, I think it is a bigger issue for, for a district like Hamilton, you know, that has like, a lot of kids go to Hamilton-Baden, like for Mad River, like, like kids go to Carroll. So I mean, I think, I think it's a bigger issue for, for certain districts, but it's, it's not as big an issue for, for us as it is for them.
I can't imagine when you have your conference calls with other treasurers, some of them might be screaming and, and ready to jump off the bridge, and others are trying to keep it together, you know? It must be very interesting. Because as you just said, every district has a little different sense of what this is all about. But I think everybody needs to worry.
Okay, yeah, happy to do that. Um, so we had on, let me think back to what was the date? I've lost, was it, yeah. Well, it was, okay, so it was two Saturdays ago, this coming Saturday. Uh, we'll, we'll be doing our second dose clinic for our middle school students who were in the age twelve to fifteen bracket. They had their first dose almost two weeks ago, which is when our high school students had their second dose of the Pfizer vaccine. So, um, we had a pretty low turnout the first time, surprisingly low, based on signups, uh, for our sixteen to eighteen year olds, but we had lots of folks show up for those twelve to fifteens. We had about a hundred and twenty students. Um, and then also some parents, some staff members who then decided, uh, I think after, maybe they saw some of the, you know, the mask requirements, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, um, who decided that they and their families would come and get vaccinated. So it was, it was busy. It was myself and, um, Tina Pett actually was volunteering her time that morning. So the two of us were bringing folks in, making copies of driver's license and health insurance cards, and making sure that, uh, people had filled out the consent forms, and we were busy the entire time. So it was, um, it was, it was really great to have that opportunity for our community. Rite Aid is who held that, uh, in partnership with us. They were the ones who actually performed the vaccinations. They'll be back on June the twelfth. Uh, Dr. Townsend is gonna staff that with Angie Cotter, so I appreciate that. And then we have talked about continuing to offer more vaccinations throughout the summer. Um, I'd like to, I haven't looked at the calendar, but basically look six weeks prior to the start of school. Um, because that's when we would need to give the first dose, three weeks later, the second dose, two weeks after that, uh, students and staff would be fully vaccinated. So approximately six weeks before school starts, looking at having another first dose clinic, um, so that we'd have as many people who want to be vaccinated by the start of school, who are in that twelve and up range. Okay, yeah, thank you, and congratulations to our retirees, and great job to everybody who participated in graduation, another, another great ceremony, so, thanks.
Yeah, I wanna congratulate the retirees that were here, but also the ones who couldn't make it here this evening. Um, I want, I don't think that should diminish their recognition either, for those, everything they've done for their years of service to both the district and the community. And that'd be, uh, Thomas Allen, who's retiring as a bus driver, uh, Dwayne Cox, retiring as a custodian for the district, uh, Vicky Marchesi and Debbie Whackerman are both head cooks that are retiring. Also, Barbara Parks, another bus driver who's retiring with over thirty years here with the district, and then middle school teacher Teresa Yoder. None of them can make it tonight, but, uh, congratulations to all of them also.
Thank you.
I was too, and I appreciate you saying their names correctly, cause I probably wouldn't have some.
That was my fear. Thank you, Mr. Hag. Mr. Berry, anything? Thank you. Uh, no comments from the public? All right, move on to our board members. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you. I have a couple things. Uh, I wanna iterate what has already been said about graduation. I, I think, um, sometimes when you innovate, you end up having things better than they were to start with. And the changes that they made because of, I guess, we're gonna blame a lot of things on COVID down through the years, but, uh, uh, some things what we do because of it turn out to be good. I thought, and I'm mad at myself because I had gotten a bunch of programs together from Baccalaureate, um, and I left them at home, uh, maybe next time. But, um, my only comment, well, not only, obviously, but music filled the air. Music kinda dominated, and it was so good to, there were a couple people at Baccalaureate, there was a, three guys, I shouldn't say that, three young men, uh, two saxophones and a trombone, just outstanding. And then a, a, a young lady sang, "You'll Never Walk Alone." I mean, it was just absolutely fabulous. And those performances at graduation, without dragging a bunch of instruments down there and all that kinda stuff, that's an excellent way to do it, and I hope we do it that way next year, because it, it, it improved in so many ways. So, um, you know, I, congratulations to everybody that had anything to do with that. Uh, I thought it was, it was wonderful. Looking to next year, I think in terms of our district, there's a couple things we need to check on and see how things are going, and see if anything can be done. But one is participation in sports, um, or anything for that matter. And, uh, that, that's becoming a little bit of a struggle. Uh, I, I remember from last spring, uh, a couple of our spring sports had trouble rounding up enough people, and, and I'm not sure what's going on there. But, um, hopefully we can start the year with a whole bunch of people participating without worrying about whether we're gonna have enough numbers to be, I mean, you can get by with a limited number of people, but to really be competitive, you have to have a lot of people. So, uh, mark it down right now, uh, a thing to talk to students about or somehow communicate would be participation in anything next, next fall. Uh, but the other thing that goes right with it is, uh, support for, uh, anything that we have in terms of boosters, band boosters, athletic boosters, uh, any of that stuff. And, um, we have people who try. Uh, the West Carrollton Education Foundation has had a couple fundraisers, and I think it's important to mention, uh, Chipotle, especially the one over on Ammanusburg Centerville Road, uh, they're always willing to have a fundraiser there where you go in and either take a form with you or not, maybe, but you get a certain percent of, of your bill. Turn back to the organization, that's the neatest thing. You, you don't sense anything's happening at all. You pay your bill. What you may or may not know is a certain, maybe as much as twenty percent, maybe higher than that, of that bill just goes, automatically goes back to the organization. West Carrollton Education Foundation has had a couple, Chipotle. Uh, there's a Rusty Taco over, uh, in that strip mall across from the mall. They, they had a similar night, and, uh, it, it's, it's a neat idea. However, if those organizations, if those restaurants don't have a lot of people doing this, they're not gonna figure it's worth their while, so they might not be willing to do it, so that's something to worry about. Uh, and I think I read that, that somebody's trying to start a, uh, help me, drill team.
A dan, a dance.
Dance team, that's what I said. And they're gonna have a fundraiser, I think, at Chipotle. So Chipotle seems to be doing a lot of this, but again, they, they, in order for these things to work, you have to have people, a lot of people there. So hopefully we'll, we'll get into that come fall. And the last thing, oh, and I, I should mention, with this fundraiser business, let's, let's never forget our booster groups, cause you have people that just wa, work at this tirelessly to, uh, to organize things and try to make money and do this and the other thing. And think how many booster groups we have, uh, how important it is to support them. So a lot of thanks go to those people. And finally, today is June the second. Friday is June the fourth. Uh, just a reminder, I announced a month ago that I was not gonna run for reelection in November. And I announced or just reminded you all that two months, two months from Friday is a deadline, August the fourth is a deadline to get petitions in to the Montgomery County Board of Elections to get on the ballot. You have to get those petitions from the Board of Elections, complete them. It's a wee bit of a task, but, uh, you know, it, it, that's just the way it is. And then get probably a minimum of seventy-five, but that, that's not even right. Uh, probably plan on closer to ninety, maybe even a hundred valid signatures. That means they have to be registered voters, they have to live in a district, and, uh, that kinda thing. But you, you need to get, let's say, ninety of those signatures, and get that back to the Board of Elections August the fourth. I won't be announcing this next month, uh, because we won't be here. And that's July the fourth, and that's not gonna work. So anyways, just a reminder, just a reminder, thank you very much.
Mr. Henry?
Thank you. I've often brought up what Dr. Townsend mentioned tonight about our students being out of the buildings and at home playing safely around we adults that drive automobiles. Please consider that every time you're behind the wheel, to watch for the little people that aren't watching for cars and trucks. Safety, please. I was very happy, excited with this year's class of twenty twenty-one graduation at UD Arena. We don't need to look at the past in comparison, just that one evening in Baccalaureate as well. There were some shining stars from our students, um, the speakers, the musicians, the singers. The red and black color staggered between men and women, our young men, young women. I went to another graduation, different colors, different school district, and they don't do that. And I thought, why don't they? And it is an administrative nightmare, right, Mr. Myers? It's hard work to get that sequence going. But it's so meaningful, and I think the graduates, looking back in a few years, will say, wow, that looked good. I was part of that. And, um, we wish all ten of our, um, retirees much happiness uh, going forward in their next, uh, adventure in life that will not include our students every day. But yet, um, hopefully they will have good health and be able to enjoy, um, the years that they've offered to students in, uh, leadership and, um, the educational, uh, process that we, we go through on their behalf. Uh, so thanks to all, and like Mr. Wolf said, we won't see you on July fourth, but have a good summer.
I, uh, I don't do this enough, so I'm gonna take a second since the school year, I guess technically is officially over. Pirate Packs is, uh, dear to a lot of us, and, um, we have a, I don't have the list in front of me, but we have a, a list of several dozen staff members who still choose to donate to Pirate Packs each time they're paid. And I just wanna publicly thank them for the contributions they make to help us. Um, as this school year restarts in August, um, hopefully Pirate Packs will be able to go back to a more traditional method for distributing food, which will involve, uh, students and family members picking up the packs at the school buildings. But, um, in the meantime, I just wanna thank, uh, all the members in the district, teachers, administrators, everyone who contributes to help us fight hunger in the district. It's greatly appreciated, and, and I don't, I don't even think I've ever said this before, so I apologize for waiting three and a half years to do it. The only other thing I would, uh, share is, I, I have a question, really not for this meeting maybe, unless you wanna throw an answer out to me, but, um, with two kids who drive, one's thinks she's probably the best, you know, my daughter thinks she's the best driver in our household. But, um, my son now drives too, and, uh, the district doesn't have a driver's ed program, but I assume it used to, maybe years ago. Did, does anyone know why it might have stopped, or if there's ever been an interest in having a program at the high school for driver's ed?
I have no answer, but I can get back to you on it.
I, I know, you know, if you have kids now that decide they wanna drive before they're eighteen, they have to go through a class, a very good class, uh, an expensive class, but it's good. Um, and so many kids now just, I'm not really complaining about this either, cause a lot of kids wait till they're eighteen or older, and that's probably a smart, good thing, cause it keeps younger kids off the road maybe a little longer, except for my sixteen year old who's already on the road. But, um, I just was curious, because it certainly for some who may wanna try and drive before they're eighteen, going through driver's ed, I assume, is, um, acceptable for the BMV to license you. But I don't even remember doing driver's ed when I was in high school, so.
When I went to school here, it was gone. We, it was like the last year, yeah, um, it left, and then I had to take, I had to finish it someplace else.
Just curious. So it's been since maybe the mid nineties then, that it's been gone? I wish I had a brake pedal on the passenger side of my cars. Thank you, that's all.
All right. I'd like to congrat, the, uh, congrats to the retirees. Best of luck in your next chapter of your life. All of our spring sports, look like they all did pretty well, track and field. Uh, boys were first in the district, and the girls placed, I think they were co-second place, is what. It was a co-second place, uh, which is incredible for us. Um, both teams were understaffed, the, the girls was really under, understaffed for, uh, for athletes. Um, like Mr. Wolf was saying, please, please consider going out for the fall sports. Uh, there's a lot going on, uh, there's a bunch of fall sports camps going on through the summer. Uh, you can catch up on that information on Pirate Kids Matter, the West Carrollton School, uh, Facebook page. Uh, there's other things, you can see the coaches' forums and things like that. Uh, take a look at those if you're interested. Um, congrats to our grads. Uh, PJ and Jody did a fantastic job on keeping everything in an orderly, proficient manner, and it was my honor to be part of that, uh, and help distribute those diplomas, so best of luck to our grads. And all of that, that's all that I've got. I just need a motion and a second to conclude this meeting, and we can move on.
So moved. Say go.
Roll, roll call, please. Mr. Cox? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Wellen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
That concludes the meeting.
I didn't wanna do that. The oldest person at the CTC always moves to adjourn.